It's a pleasure, sir.
Are you Beth?
Yes.
With us now we have Beth Albert, who is the department manager of the Human Service Department to present our budget. Welcome back.
Thanks for having me, all of you. So...
Yes. How are you, Beth?
I'm fine. Do you have any questions about my budget or how would you prefer I present this?
Infinite need, finite resources. What can we say?
Yeah, let's, why don't you start? Why don't you just go over the differences, maybe? Yeah, if there's anything different.
So, I guess really the only difference between my current fiscal year 11 budget and what I'm going to put forth for fiscal year 12 would be in the area of professional and technical services. And the rationale from that, this current fiscal year, it's $50,000 and that's, those are the funds that I use to hire consultants, for example, our Healthy Connected Cape Cod coordinator.
Is that the food in the summer?
No, 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 no. We don't do the summer food program anymore. We worked with the Y and then I took it over last summer.
Excellent, okay.
Which was a win-win, I think, for all. But that money's used for me to hire consultants, so for example, Healthy Connected Cape Cod, we had an independent contractor working on that. It's allowing me to leverage my resources with the Department of Mental Health to hire a suicide prevention coordinator. And so, in the past year, it was $50,000. Going, what I'm proposing is that that be increased to 178 and the rationale is that one, I want to continue with paying for a 2-1-1 coordinator. The payment for our 2-1-1 coordinator, Ronnie Galette, who's been working with us for over a year, came from a CHINA grant and that money is ending February 28th. I have some money to keep her onboard through a transition period, but I'm anticipating hiring someone to keep that coordinator onboard. And so, this would be for paying for that person's services from July 1st on. 2-1-1 has been incredibly successful. We've put a lot of work into it. It is a partnership with the United Way. And so, I'd like to be able to continue that. The other parts that make up that 178 have to do with paying for a suicide prevention coordinator for next fiscal year. In addition, we'd like to have, hire some additional, possibly some consultants to work with us on some research projects. The initiative that our advisory council's been working on is Healthy Connected Cape Cod. I currently have no funds to continue that coordinator position, so this would be for next fiscal year.
Do you have the breakdown, Beth, for each of them?
I do have the breakdown right here. Do you want me to?
We didn't get it in our packet, so if you want to...
So, my backup is for the 2-1-1 coordinator. It's 20 hours a week, so the total for the year would be 41,600. Suicide Prevention Community Organizer, again, 20 hours per week, 41,600. Research Professionals, 15,000. Our Healthy Connected Cape Cod Project Manager is 25 hours a week and that's $50,000. Regional Network Coordinator is in another project I want to do, I'm asking for $30,000 because what I failed to mention earlier was that our budget also paid for the Regional Network on homelessness, the network coordinator.
Supplemental for the network coordinator to continue.
Because that funding, so that was, that brought our network coordinator through this fiscal year.
And these are all contractors?
They're all contractors. They're not employees because I, we have a three-person department. So, how we handle these kind of projects that emerge and that we're working on is by hiring somebody as an independent contractor.
So, they're given a contract with the scope of service and said, "Go out and implement" this project?
Right. And it has been working. I mean, considering not all of these things, the Quatno full-time position and it's, when the project is over, then we don't have an employee, but so...
And you know, like the Healthy Connected, I mean, do we have feedback on how that...
Healthy Connected Cape Cod, we're really on the cutting edge with that. I mean, and it's not to create new programs. Essentially, what it is, is to, is to recognize all of the different programs that are going on. I mean, the hospital has some stuff. We're starting conversations with our County Department of Health about some childhood obesity. There's stuff going on with the CHINA. There's stuff going on throughout the community. And so, we're not creating a new program. We're simply helping promote and then connect residents, county residents, to those programs. And with all of this stuff coming, we anticipate coming with healthcare reform. There's a lot of opportunities.
For more funding for this?
More funding for this. And so, this really keeps us moving forward. It's an amazing concept. It's really a framework for how to look at all of the assets in Barnstable County around what we're calling happy, healthy eating, but it's, and then connecting people to them. So, and it actually has allowed us to partner with a cooperative extension, like I said, with the opportunity possibly to partner and work with the Department of Health. So, that's also good because it's cross-county department. So, it's the Healthy Connected Cape Cod initiative. And it's been a slow rollout because it's a different way of thinking of things and I haven't had, we only have, we have a very, very part-time person as an independent contractor working on that. His contract ended. So, I would really like to continue that project. We've put a lot of work into it. We, with our new researcher, Christine Stein, her background has to do with program evaluation and so that program evaluation piece is being built into it.
Good.
Because like I said, we're trying to, one of the parts of Healthy Connected Cape Cod is really to promote programs that are effective and that work.
Right, as opposed to those that are just gathering funds.
Right.
We did the RDO earlier today, but they were trying to get a visitor volunteer.
We are hoping to get another AmeriCorps volunteer and that person would supplement the 2-1-1 and the Healthy Connected Cape Cod because as we move forward those positions, since it has to do with knowing what the resources are and connecting people to it, to me, it's part of, you know, 2-1-1 is a system, a database and a call-in center, but it's really knowing what's going on monthly and then being able to give it to those. That's why I see one of our most important roles.
Okay.
So, that's the major, if you look at my budget, that's the major difference is that I've asked for additional funds for professional services. Everything is pretty much on par with last year. We did have to move some lines around because they had been, you know, as IT more fully figures out like what line software should be taken out of, et cetera. So, there have been some changes because of that, but essentially, it's the status quo with last year. The only other change is under contractual services special. One of our goals has been, and we have made some inroads, but not tremendous, with tremendous success, is to partner with the university and with Christine Stein's connections to UMass and Tufts.
Oh, she got a PhD from Brandeis?
Yes. And we're actually, Brandeis is one of the programs, but we have contacted those schools and put out a request for an internship with a master's level person in public health. And so, this would pay for a stipend for them as well as, you know, substantial. So, that's, those essentially are the two big changes in my budget and they have to do with hiring supplemental contractors or interns to help us with that work.
I had a question that, you know, when I went over the budget, it would have to do with, we don't, if 34% of us were over 55, we don't seem to have a connection with geriatric social work, you know, in this. I know that we have separate programs for, you know, like Timlin, who's evaluating.
And you have geriatric social work.
You mean the county, you mean my department having a connection with the geriatric social work?
Well, I'm wondering whether or not, you know, to evaluate, you know, the note that I made to myself is, should we have a geriatric social worker to evaluate the growing problem of frail elders and, you know, and...
I think you're onto something and one of the things that I, is, we're looking at is starting to, and it adds on to 2-1-1, but to possibly look at a pilot, what we're calling a navigator or an advocate position that would do that on the upper-level intensive case management. So, we have, you can look at it in tiers. You have people who have, you know, just a basic need and we can refer them through 2-1-1 to get that service. And we have people who need kind of moderate level, I would say, case manager needs. And there's that whole chronic illness.
Yeah.
And, you know, it affects a lot of people who are seniors. So, that, I didn't ask for funding specifically for that because it's something I'm just starting to develop the concept around, but it plays in very nicely with some stuff possibly going on at the Department of Public Health that we've been invited to start meeting about. So, you're definitely onto something. I don't call it a geriatric social worker, but it's that, it's that...
Our population, yeah.
It's that chronic, how do you connect people to make sure that people with chronic, ongoing, you know, coexisting, whatever disorders, get the right care? Because it's a very complicated system and there's a lot of need around that area.
Well, but I happen to, you know, say to be aware of it, but then when I took the B-bus, you know, the dark, and was, you know, was watching the amount of frail elders that were basically using that transportation and they were spread out, I was on a load acres, you know, spread out all over. You know, it occurred to me that, you know, are we, are we looking at this as, you know, as an issue area, either to, let's say, to have some direct intervention or to bring it up as an issue for the Human Service Advisory Council to see whether or not there needs to be a focus in that area?
I would think everyone would say without hesitation, there's a need to make it any more closely where people are having problems, you know, probably the people in the Council. Most, not all of the councils on aging have outreach workers. They actually will go out into their home and then they report back. And then places like Ronnie Galette, who is our 2-1-1 coordinator, is also, is also a social worker who does that really high-level, really complex case management. She essentially is an advocate and she fights for people to get, you know, the right medical insurance, the right social security benefits, whatever, but there is definitely a need for really skilled people to do that. But we need to look at what's out there and then possibly create a model that plays into the whole medical home model stuff that's coming with healthcare reform. There's a lot of pieces happening at the same time, but you're absolutely right that it is something we need to look at more closely. Not so that we would provide the direct service.
Right.
But what is the direct?
But how do we put a template in place that could be...
Yes, and actually I have a draft job description on my desk right now. We're calling it the navigator advocate, but it's essentially...
We never talked.
No, I know we did it, so I segue into that.
Right. Yeah, they just said to Beth that, you know, if it's geriatric social work, I'll type which helps.
I mean, it's...
You can volunteer for it. No, you could volunteer for it.
There are some...
It's a way to cut costs.
I think I'm already volunteered on this board, so I'm always available.
There are some really good models out there. I mean, without mentioning any names, I mean, there are places that do this, but it's really, it's articulating what that successful model would be.
Just for the assembly hearing.
Yes.
I would just encourage you to have the backup.
Yep.
And then give them, you know, it's your committee, so they're supporting, you know, they're usually, they're supporting the human services, but I would have it broken out and then have like an overview of each of the programs.
Okay.
So that they understand rather than say, "Oh, my gosh, you know, a big increase." No. They may say, "You know what?" What, so they give it, so they have that background material, so have, this one is $50,000 and here's what it's for, this is what it's done to date.
I did it for myself, but I will certainly do that.
It would be helpful.
I think it will really...
I could have copied this for you if you guys would like this.
Yes, I think it's just helpful for everybody.
Yeah, I think it'd copy it.
Yeah, and I think it would be helpful for us for, we're reviewing, re-reviewing all of this.
Okay.
Because then they have it and then they will, they will become your advocates for why it's important to keep these line rates up.
Yep.
Well, the optimism that, you know, I said this, you know, Saturday, the Admiral Starkdale paradox exists. We can't lose sight of the fact that we are, we are in very critical times facing many critical issues, that we have to figure out a way to provide some hope that we can, you know, that we get through, you know, through all of this. And I think that of all of the departments that we have, I think that the Human Service Department, which is dealing with, you know, on a holistic basis, you know, the actual need that's here, we have to figure out a way of recognizing where we are and figuring out how can we, how can we provide some hope to sort of, you know, move beyond it. So, anyway, that's...
You know, I think the other selling point for you is that these are programs that meet the needs on the Cape and meet the other human services needs. And so, instead of having individual human services organizations go into the assembly and asking for money, it's coordinated through the county's human services, which is the way we want it to be.
So, what we've chosen to focus on, you're exactly right, are projects that are regional, that they're not just one issue, they cross issues. I mean, with the exception of suicide prevention, I guess you could say homelessness, but those, those impact everybody across the Cape, so they really are regional, regional issues and that's, that's what we've chosen to focus on. I mean, I could have, I could get up here and tell you all of the unmet needs, but I mean, it would, I would be here forever.
Right.
And actually, our advisory council is, one of the things they, we're working on right now is coming up with, we haven't actually approved the idea yet, but the idea is to, how can we better communicate, the advisory council, how can they better communicate to you and the Assembly of Delegates about really the breadth of all of the different needs?
What's showing the increase, what's your...
Well, your role is communication, collaboration, and coordination for that thing. We're, that's the, you're probably...
Right, but I, yeah, I mean, but there's so many issues and I, you know, I could, you know, give you pages and pages and pages, but that's not the most effective way to break for information.
And each, each year, there may, there may be a shifting.
Yes.
There may be, some may be less than next year and another need may emerge as a higher priority. And so, if you had that funding, you, you know, you wouldn't be wedded to whatever...
That's the flexibility that...
That gives, that's maybe for this year, but next year it might be a little different.
Now, Congress McKeen is supposed to shop today. And one of the things that, you know, that I've been concerned with is how can we get direct access to CDBG money as a county? Because although there are three entitlement communities on the Cape, that leaves the other 12 not in a position to, let's say, to have direct access to it, whereas the county could act as a, as an umbrella organization to help coordinate that. And if indeed, you know, the money shifts and we actually, you know, connect to that, I would look at the Human Service Department to be, you know, to be the method by which we would support the delivery, you know, of all of those funds. So, besides that question, which I've already asked him, what other questions would you ask Congress McKeen, you know, if you had an opportunity to speak to her directly?
Okay, McQ, you could speak for Kate from the other night, from, well, FAN.
Oh, from Freedom From, right, so there are lots of areas that we have not, you know, we've only been perfectly involved with in, since I've been here and one of them is this all substance abuse issue and, yeah, there's lots of questions about...
I told her I would bring that up today.
Oh, yeah.
And on the substance abuse, what is, you know, what's really concerning is that we did have a funding source because of the attacks on alcohol that was, you know, that was supporting a lot of, you know, substance abuse problems. Now that that's gone away, who do we look to and where, and where is, you know, where is there a potential pot of money to, let's say, to access in order to provide that support?
What was the question Gina was going to ask?
Oh, well, they're putting together a forum on heroin and opioid control and the whole idea about the prescription recording program. And getting better funds to move these programs forward is what she really is looking for.
She's also working with the town of Barnstable, you know, they're working on a...
Drug-free community.
Drug-free community, yeah. So, there's, you know, that's not, that's something that's also...
Well, it's a high priority for Bill Keating, too.
Exactly, and that it is an area that we, we need to get more involved in, but there has, I just, there's only one of the, I mean, I guess I should have added that, right, to my budget request?
Oh, yeah, well...
Cloning request?
I'm under a certain amount of pressure, you know, because my daughter is, you know, is involved with the program.
It's a huge issue. We've really got, we've got to get a better, I mean, there's lots of things going on all around, but it's, you know...
Well, Beth, I think you're doing a wonderful job.
We have to introduce you to a person in return that wants a little bit more involved or a way he can help, so...
Okay, all right. Thank you, Beth.
And then, will you be coming back for human rights?
Yes.
Will you come in at 1:30? He'll be in at 1:30.
Yeah, human rights is still part of your budget.
Yes, it is.
I think the question that we probably ask you is, they're asking for some significant increase. Remember, the history is that they have been a contract organization and I believe that they're looking for becoming an employee.
I think they were looking to have a full, somebody in that, in that capacity as a coordinator, full-time.
Not as, not an employee of the county, but increasing their contractor's hours.
Right, exactly.
Right, which would mean it would be an issue of benefits and things of that sort.
No, it would not, it would not...
It would still be a contractor.
They're affiliated with us. They don't work under best direction. They are independent, so they're asking to increase the contract. So, instead of having a part-time contractor, they want to have a full-time contractor.
So, it's still a contract.
And do you have any opinion about that?
I do have an opinion about that. I think I'd like to, at some point, talk about possibly looking at how that is structured underneath our department. I mean, right now, we provide administrative support and some other things and I, so I do have some, some areas I think that we could improve the lines of communication to make that a little bit more, because they, like Maggie said, I mean, the coordinators don't report to me and the Human Rights Commission is a volunteer organization and so whenever you have a volunteer organization, just like any coalition that I work on, it's very difficult to provide support to that coordinator. And up till now, that coordinator has been a part-time coordinator and they're looking to move it to a full-time coordinator. So, we may want to, we may want to think a little bit about how, who that person reports to and how that all is structured, just to make sure we are, you know, it is a Barnstable County Human Rights Commission.
Well, which brings up a point, you know, tonight they're having a forum in Yarmouth on military recruits in high schools.
You have the militarization of schools, right?
The, you know, the issue that people should understand is that that's something that was initiated by the Human Rights Commission and not something that was initiated by the Human Service Department. I think it's, you know, it was a topic to have and I think there's some misunderstanding as to exactly what the role is of recruiting a school and whether or not that's supporting a, let's say, a political agenda as much as it's just supporting, you know, the, you know, the need of giving people of a certain age, let's say, a career option, you know, with regard to some of the choices that they might make. So, I plan to go to that myself, you know, to observe, to see what that is. I'm a veteran and I do recognize that, you know, there are many parts to this, not just the one of making a political statement, because there is a responsibility of every citizen to be given a role and a duty, but that's a little issue. Okay, is there anything, is it, do you have a takeaway? Is it real? We've got to hear this takeaway from you.
Well...
Not on that issue, but just in general.
In general, I mean, as Mary Pat pointed out, I mean, there are a lot of regional health and human service issues that I am not, that the department has not been actively involved in and that at some point, that is concerning. You know, Substance Abuse Coalition or FAN or whatever they're calling themselves, Freedom From Addiction, is a good example. So, you, you, there's a group that's, that's putting together this coalition on a regional issue. I just have not had the time to invest in that and that concerns me because I, you know, there are some big regional health and human service issues, not just that one, there's other ones that I have not been able to put the time into because there's only so many hours in the day. So, I mean, it is, it's going to come up over and over again, so that does, that does concern me, that I don't, that we don't have enough staff, I guess, to, to address some of these things that we should be more actively involved in, so...
Well, there's a, just so you know, the town of Barnstable is trying to put together a survey that would be distributed in Barnstable High School as well as the other schools that have Barnstable students, you know, in Barnstable about patterns of alcohol and substance use.
They're going to do the risk, the youth risk behavior survey?
Something like that, yeah. And I think Catherine Q is, you know, is involved in, let's say...
I don't know.
Well, you know, she's, she's sitting in committee, so, you know, she's been talking about it, but we've, you know, we've gotten to the point where we get some support from, you know, for distribution of the survey from the schools, but, you know, the Barnstable High School is concerned that they'd be identified as being the only, you know...
Yeah, I don't know enough about that to know what schools do participate in that. I think it is more than one school district participates. The results are typically kept with them in dis...
Yeah, and then they're...
It's not easy and so, so when you, so then, right, so if you publicize your results and nobody else's, it makes you look like you may have some issues that other school districts don't. But I don't think, I don't know how much control we would have over...
No, we have no control over it. It is, it is a challenge issue and it's just journalism or reporting on, because I sit on that committee and I'm reporting on, you know...
Yeah, it would be great to have all of the schools participate in that and publicize all of their results so that we actually could have a better picture of it. And I know we've got bits and pieces of it, but once again, that's, I, we, our department, since I've been here, has not had the resources to look at that more fully. Is it an area we could? Absolutely.
Well, we're now in the process of designing the new human condition report and one of the things that comes up is, what are they, what are the kinds of questions should we be asking in order to collect information with regard to something that would be useful for these NGOs and, you know, and nonprofits?
And that's where the feedback from our advisory council, we just did make Freedom From Addiction Network, they're their own, they have their own seat on the advisory council now. And so, when we start developing the survey questions, we're not going to be calling it Monitoring Human Condition anymore, but it's a community-wide needs assessment, it's a, it's going to have a different name.
What are you going to call it?
I don't know yet. I don't know yet.
Do we have a contest?
Huh?
We have a contest?
Sure, we'll have a contest. No, because it's going to, it's going to be different, but it's, we're going to put a lot of thought into exactly, right, what are the best questions to ask and get feedback from our advisory council on what is important for them to know. Monitoring the Human Condition was great to give you an overview, but if there's some areas that we need to be looking at a little bit more closely, you know, with substance abuse, depression, whatever, then you need to ask those questions in a different way and we haven't asked those previously.
As we talked about making our budget developed from more program, what is it, what do you program?
Programmatic.
Programmatic, perhaps, you know, some thought should be given as to whether or not the questions that you ask would, would be ones that might lead to program development of support, you know, as far as, because it's always the next step.
Yeah.
The concern that I have with, you know, with questions that are done that create statistical information is that sometimes the question doesn't have the, either the nuance or the, you know, the backup notes and it suggests a general level of behavior which, you know, which is, which is really, you know, which really isn't appropriate when you're looking at a very narrow...
Absolutely. I understand what you're saying. I would agree with you, but like I said, I mean, monitoring the human condition was good to get that broad brush on a variety of questions, the overall picture on the Cape. Going forward, any needs assessment or community-based research we would do would, would probably be targeting some specific areas and so, therefore, we would not call it monitoring the human condition, just because it'd be confusing for people, I think. But, so, is there anything you want to leave, any, I mean, I've, I've picked a couple things from you, as far as areas you wanted to look at.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And thank you so much for, you know, everything you have done. We really enjoyed the...
Thank you for what you do. You and you.
Yes.
Wait, thank you.
So, Human Services meets tomorrow?
Is it?
No, not tomorrow.
No, our advisory council meets the fourth Thursday.
The fourth Thursday, that's right.
So, it's, it's the end of, right, the first...
Over the arcade. And that way, the public is invited to that.
Yes, the public gets an open meeting.
Is it the transportation building?
Money program.
Okay.
Thank you.
I will make a motion. I'm going to, are you going to be in your office in a minute?
Well, you're going to make it, wait a minute, I'm going to come in to, sorry. No, it doesn't like to, it has to do with Open Cape and asking, yeah, Gallagher to come. One of the things is, based on the recent census, you know, which is showing that the Cape is now much older than it was before, that how much, how much will Open Cape be able to help change the demographic of the Cape? In other words, if we had high-tech jobs that were available to people of working age, let's say, how might, how might that be able to help change some of the demographic, where young people might decide to stay here because there are well-paying jobs that they could have? That's what I would like to add to.
I think that's part of, that's what we were anticipating, that you set up the structure and the program, you know, you set up the infrastructure for people and entrepreneurial creativity that, that's part of what's going to.
Over, over the Workforce Board, we discovered that there's 70,000 unfilled jobs in Massachusetts.
Really?
Oh, in Massachusetts?
Well, actually, yeah.
Then it has to be Massachusetts.
It has to be Massachusetts, but the point is that with 70,000 unfilled jobs because people are not available with the appropriate kind of skill levels, one of the questions I think we have to ask the congressman is, since he is on the Small Business Committee, is to what types of money will he be putting into the training that we can use the Workforce Board as a conduit to get this money, you know, into the community?
And have the college help in providing some kind of skills training as well.
Well, they're at the table, yes.
Yeah, I know, I think. I don't mean necessarily Open Cape, but just in general.
Yeah, but that, but all of that has to do is, if we're creating an opportunity for jobs, what is, you know, what is the other piece so that we can define what the job descriptions would be so that we could, you know, we could support, you know, that? Because just saying we'll create 4,000 jobs, if there's only three of them that, you know, that people can fill immediately, you know, without training, you know, then we have to figure out how can we support that other piece.
Okay, I'll let you know when that's scheduled for.
I have a motion that we go into recess until we are, until 1:30, when the Human Rights Commission will be here.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, vote by rising.
Okay.
Okay, I want to welcome the viewers back to the continuation of the Barnstable County Commissioners Meeting. Today is February 2nd, and with us now, we have representatives of the Human Rights Commission, and I'm going to welcome them, and who will speak for you? Would you introduce us up to the viewers?
Yep, my name is Ingrid Musmari. I'm the new chair of the Barnstable County Human Rights Commission, and I would like to thank you for having us here, the Human Rights Commission. Introduce myself as the new chair.
Welcome.
Thank you. It's my first time meeting you, Mary Pat, but we've seen in different meetings, so it's my pleasure to be here today. Very happy to be the chair and try my best.
Thank you so much for doing that.
To work with the county. So I'm going to present our budget proposal. I'm very new with the commission. I was a commissioner for, from 2005 to 2007, but just come back as a chair, yeah? So Michael, the vice-chair, is going to speak more regarding to the budget, and Ryan's here to give us support as the coordinator, and I thank you for you to be here today.
Well, we have our budget outlined, our proposal, and as you can see, we've requested a substantial increase in order to fund our programs and to complete the work of our strategic plan. So we're here today to answer any questions that you may have about our budget request.
I think your requests are fairly straightforward. Do you have any questions, Pat?
No, I don't have questions, but I thought maybe you could talk a little bit about what you hope to accomplish with this increasing in your budget.
Well, essentially.
For, for all the people at home, too, as well as us.
Absolutely. Well, as a commission, we met to devise a strategic plan to guide our work over the next few years. And one of the most important aspects of our work is public relations or increasing visibility about the Human Rights Commission in the county, because a lot of people just simply don't realize that we're here and can provide this service. So really, the funding is essential to being able to develop the kind of outreach, community outreach, in order to promote the Human Rights Commission and really make it visible and easily accessible. And one of the things that we've done this year is to set up times for the public to come to the Hyannis Transportation Center. There's specific times set up on a weekly basis where just drop in, you know, any individual who has any kinds of human rights-related concerns or discrimination concerns could certainly drop in, or just to find out more about the Human Rights Commission.
Well, I, I didn't know about that.
It's new.
Okay, and what, what day do they do this?
Is it Tuesday?
Well, actually, Michael, it hasn't been approved yet by the Human Rights Commission. It's on, it's on the.
Oh, I see.
We have an meeting next Monday, and we're thinking between Tuesday and Wednesday. So we're going to present for the other commissioners.
Okay, do you have support from the RTA?
Yes, yes, I met with Mr. Keater and, and working with his assistant.
Oh, Paul George?
Oh, no, actually with Kathy, that's her on desk, and they've given us the times that they're wide open, and the goal, of course, is to have a consistent time.
Yes.
For a run of seven or eight weeks, or nine weeks, and then evaluate, is this worth, worth it or not. So, so if it's approved on Monday, I'll immediately go see the folks at the, at the Transportation Center and confirm bookings.
So how will this work? Do you have, you have space there?
Well, there's the conference room, and it's in the brown level, and it's near restroom, and very machine, and it's well-known to the, most of the population that might be coming to see us, we think.
Yeah, there's some privacy.
And there's privacy, and there'd be at all times, never just one, but two or three, either myself or a commissioner, but two or three of us would be given time, signed up in advance to be there to entertain questions of different people.
I think that's a wonderful idea.
I also want to add that the location is just a very central location, and myself being there, I'm not, we're going to work around the commissioners in terms of schedule, but we're also going to provide some language ability, myself with the Portuguese and Spanish. So we're going to have the ability if there's anybody else there in our community who'd like to come and ask any question or get to know a little bit more about us, or in general, question.
And with this being a pilot kind of starter project, if it works, then we may look at expanding this and offering drop-ins throughout the county in different locations. One of the biggest increase, well, the biggest increase in our budget request this year was to double the coordinator time, our staff contracted by the county, because essentially, as a group of volunteers on the Human Rights Commission, you know, most of us have full-time jobs, you know, families are involved in multiple different civic organizations, and so having the manpower to accomplish our goals is essential. And the only way that we can really see to do that is by having a full-time staff person. I know that it's something that we've, the Human Rights Commission has long wanted, wished for, hoped for, and we're really hopeful that this year we'll be able to accomplish our goals with a full-time staff.
Now, is, just so clear on what exactly you're asking for. You're asking for funding to support a contract, not for employment, not to.
Correct. It's not, it's a contracted, not, not an employee of the county.
Okay. If we were to, did you have some more to tell us about your general operation?
Well, you know, I would love the opportunity to do, you know, a presentation about specifically our strategic plan, and then, you know, I could.
When do you think you'd be able to do that?
Pardon?
When do you think you'd be ready to do that?
We could schedule the time anytime. I'd want to be able to prepare and have a proper presentation for you.
Okay, because we do have another outlet that you could use. We have a television program that we run.
I would love the opportunity to get on that.
All right, look, I tape Mondays in March, so, you know, pick a Monday.
Any Monday in March.
Okay, except the first Monday because I'm out of town, but the other Mondays, give me, we tape at 3:00, you know, I think you have, you have my email?
I do.
Okay, send me an email, pick one of those Mondays at 3:00 and come on, come on down.
That'll be wonderful.
And that way, I think that that might have more life to it than, you know, than having, although it's important, you know, to present here and present at the assembly. And you might want to think about presenting elements of your strategic plan when you present to the assembly to support, or you request for the budget. I would be, I would be happy to, in order to have you come on and just tell people in general what, what your intentions are, because I think that the more visibility we give to this, the less fearful people might be about, about the affect of that, so.
Absolutely. We'd love the opportunity. We'll set a date in March, for sure.
I also want to add with this budget proposal, that's very important, that the Human Rights Commission is doing for a while, is the Human Rights Academy, so that's part of.
The Human Rights Academy is a low, highly dotted activity where, you know, where you're helping our children sort of understand how they fit into things, and I've seen recently, especially on Martin Luther King Day, how wonderful it was to see parents engaging and involving their children in a spirit of giving and, you know, and our community participation, and I think that this is one of those, that activity that you run is one of the things that extends that, and I think it's very important.
And we want to grow that program. We want to be able to expand it and offer it into the middle schools and connect high school and middle school-age students with elementary school students to be able to talk about some of the issues around anti-bullying. I know that we received a request from the District Attorney's Office that, you know, there's been a lot of elementary schools reaching out, looking for resources to talk about bullying and the issues with their students. What better way than to connect our high school Human Rights Academy alums with students in the younger grades?
I, it never really felt important, but it was, there was a, I do a lot of substitute in high schools and middle schools, and there was a conversation, you know, kids are chattering, so one said, "That was so gay," and I said, "I have this to say. I will not tolerate that kind of talk."
It's good for you.
Wait a minute, let me tell you that, because that, you know, that's sort of self-serving. But what did happen, which I'm really pleased with, there was a kid there saying, "You know, my uncle's gay, and I've always resented the fact when this comes up. Thank you for saying that."
Wow.
So, there is, so I would, I would say that, you know, say to people, you know, when you're talking to them, there is a reward that comes up, because, you know, we used to talk about something called a silent majority. Well, there's a silent majority of children that are in schools that, in order to fit in, in order to be accepted, they basically, you know, you know, the joke comes out every week, well, in parochial schools, you remember, you remember the nuns used to tell us about, just because Johnny Jones jumps off the cliff, you're not supposed to do that. And one of the things that the schools are trying to do is to try to instill some of those self-reinforcing kinds of things, that they had a health, health class, they were, they brought the kids in and were telling them about, and this was an 11-year-old, a 12-year-old, a 13-year-old, that we, that were presented as the, you know, as the young of substance abuse. It was incredible that they were basically reinforcing this, that you do not have to sort of give in to what seems to be the grupo ecos, as far, you know, as far as attitude, that you, if you respect yourself, you know, you can, you know, you can demonstrate that self-respect by respecting others, and that, you know, it's sort of reinforcing that whole thing, so, which is, what I look at the main value of the Human Rights Commission is teaching or reinforcing the idea of, that by respecting others, you are demonstrating your own high level of self-esteem and self-respect.
Can I add, Bill, that I remember, I mean, we, when a few others of us met with the commissioners, what, two months ago, where it was brought up about the expansion to middle school. I don't think you were here, Michael, when you were there.
No.
They were talking about the expansion to middle school, and seemed to be focusing only on the value of high school kids speaking to middle school kids, and I remember very well how you brought up at that time, that we're not to negate also, at the very same time, the value of adults speaking to kids, as you did in that case, and, and we certainly know that the commissioners and others of us who are adults within the group will not simply give it over to the high school to talk to middle school, but we recognize the important, the key importance also of us speaking and being out there with them.
And by the way, that, the, that lesson about speaking up was reinforced because when I went through psychological water operations training, they, in the Battle of Hearts and Minds, one of the things that does not happen is that there is a bandwagon effect where people accept a particular kind of behavior because it appears to be a groupe d'ennemi, and that, you know, a demonstration of leadership is to set yourself apart and, you know, set a standard, and that is the example that I think that your, your training's trying to give. So, anyway.
I have a couple of questions about this.
Sure.
I'm not really clear where, how much money do you get from the county now?
Twenty-eight.
Is it fair to say that you get $26,000 now?
Twenty-eight thousand, eight hundred.
That's total?
For the year.
So that's $26,000 for the coordinator?
Twenty-six thousand is for the contracted services.
Contracted services and the other two?
Twenty-eight hundred is what is now part two of our proposal, the pencils and supplies and.
Okay, I think you may have these years in reverse.
You may have gotten some.
I think it's F, it's 10, 2010 would be actual, and 2011 would be, well, it's really 2012 would be.
Excuse me, this, this is the format.
Maybe you have.
Okay, I'm sorry, this, this, can I just give you that instead?
Yes, you can. Thank you.
Could I give you one other?
Go ahead.
Ah, there we go. That's much better. Thank you.
Be misleading, sorry, two. You may have some other format, but I want to be sure that.
I know the formatting was an issue.
Yeah.
The formatting for the, it's, it's an issue, not just for this, but I have, I have a hard time formatting that stuff.
Anyway, I think that what I just handed.
Oh, yeah.
This is the.
That and the same thing.
Yes, yeah.
Okay, so now you get $28,200.
Great.
And you're looking for $67,200. Is that, that's the total number of the county, right?
That is different, that is different.
Oh, okay.
Sixty-seven hundred, and that's sectional.
Sixty-seven thousand.
Seven thousand.
Right, on the last page. And the majority of that, I guess, goes to the, well, not all of it, some, most of it goes to the coordinator.
No, but the larger segment is the doubling of whoever would fill the job that I'm now serving, the contracted services.
And the eighty-two hundred for, for.
Supplies and services, right, and then 7,000 for programs.
Can I ask you a question? The budget that you're looking at, did it have the miscellaneous supplies and the travel? Because the budget format that I submit under.
Just, I put a note on the part eight.
Yeah, I did.
Thank you, Mary Pat.
You know, the Excel budget that I submit to Mark is a, is a different format. Tom couldn't format, so he ended up using this, this format. So what I had to do was make it fit into our line items, and I just, I just want to mention.
We don't have line items from, as you, as you prepare them.
Okay, so you don't have like an Excel for our budget with all the line items?
No.
You just have the total?
This is what we have.
Just want to make sure we're looking at. So that's what you're, okay, all right, that's nice.
Because I, I think in your budget, it would appear as a line item on a particular section.
Yes, yes, and I just want to make sure.
And then the chart of accounts would have that, you know, would have that reference number, where you could trace it back.
I just, I didn't know what you were working from.
Because that's what's used to consolidate that figure with the general line item under that particular, either labor or expense.
So, the programs in education, now, how, those are new costs that you're proposing? Programs in education, regional programs, underprograms in education, regional and public education?
In order to expand our high school human.
Of the high school.
The high school Human Rights Academy program, looking to break into the middle schools and elementary schools. schools and elementary schools. So, yeah, it definitely would be expanding that program.
And that's part of your strategic plan?
It is.
At the very bottom of page six on that document, Mary Pat, you'll see the costs, being the breakdown of cost in the high school, middle school, et cetera. And then the proposal is that we regenerate through grants and our own leather, you know, shoe work, we gain, we gain half of that and the other half is proposed in the budget.
So this, this is, this $7,000, I, when I submitted, since your, the Human Rights Commission budget submitted under my budget, I need to go back and revise it because I didn't, this $7,000 is not included.
What is the figure that you're using?
See, I'm going from what I submitted, which is, like I said, an Excel spreadsheet. So I'm on page eight of your, of your document.
So you submitted $60,200.
So I submitted the salary, I'm sorry, the contracted service, and then the supplies and service that have to do with postage, office supplies, printing, telephone, internet, other mileage. I did not, and have no line item for programs in education.
Part three.
Part three. So I need to amend what I submitted and somehow, you know, I'll talk to Mark about where this would appropriately go.
Good. I'd leave another copy of this for Mark. I'll give you a copy.
I emailed, he received by email whatever you submitted, because remember, it was a deadline thing, so-
Oh, I remember, the columns were hard to pull off.
Right, and that's what makes it, so when you're transferring from one format to another, this is why it's important, if everybody uses the same format, things get lost.
Right.
And in looking at this, I realized that $7,000 got lost, and it's not reflected on what I submitted to Mark.
So Beth, do you want to give to Mark?
I'll talk to Mark. I have this.
Do you have the same?
Yep.
So you have everything here on your line item, the education.
Except for that $7,000, right.
And we may want to mention the same things that Maggie suggested to, I think, to you, was it to you, when you get to the Assembly?
Yeah.
Was to have these programs very, you know, very clearly-
Right, so what was suggested to me is to have a little description of what, what the program is, and to have a handout.
And a copy of your strategic plan, I think would be very helpful to have that for the Assembly as well.
Yeah, have the strategic-
Yeah, because they know what's driving your request, that these are not just requests you came up with, but they're being driven by the, by the fact that you've, you've constructed a strategic plan collaboratively.
Correct.
And it's really to meet the goals that you, that you want to meet.
Has the Assembly set the dates yet for the cycle reviews?
No, because we, they, they set them after we-
After we send over the budget.
I believe we're sending over the budget from, what, beginning of March?
Yeah, somewhere around there.
And at that time, you know, they'll, they'll sign it up. Now, they, they will have a new clerk at the Assembly. She was supposed to be here today, except for weather. Ron forgave her, so she'll be here. I guess she'll be for duty next Monday, or anyway.
She made it with the Assembly at their next meeting, which is two weeks from now.
Right.
But I don't know what she actually-
But in the meantime, was it Michelle?
Yes.
Her name?
You never know, the other one, the one is Jen and is a-
It's Michelle.
Michelle Springer.
Michelle Springer is still the one that you can use as a contact to get information with regard to-
The dates.
Dates and things like that. Now, did you have any other questions?
No.
Okay. While we view everything you do is, doing is deemed important, and none of us can say that, that any of this is not worthwhile, we are living with the paradox of never one moment forgetting how critical the times are, but at the same time, how do we, how do we endure hope going forward? So right now, we're focusing in the budget process on the critical times that we're at, and I, I'm not optimistic in regard to these things.
I understand. Can I just say one thing to that, is that I think the services of the Human Rights Commission are amongst those kind of groups whose work becomes more important at times of crisis, when people are stressed, when there's more poor people, when there's more people facing foreclosure, stress in society, this is one of the groups that can be a tonic in a good sense to, to the body politic. But I suppose many groups could say that, but I certainly think it can be said, but what we're trying to do.
We come from the same tradition, you know, so I sort of get that, and it's always, it's always hopeful to have more people to support, you know, what are troubling times. A lot of people are, are troubled, and you know my opinion about the safety net and all the rest of it, but nevertheless, we are in, you know, we have, we have a lot of areas that we have to look at, and I would be, I would be disingenuous in this lady if I suggested that there was, I'd say, some magic pot of money that we could reach into to look at this. So Beth, did you-
I just had a comment. So, you know, obviously, training is an important component of something that the Commissioners require, that town reps require. Tom, I'm assuming you're going to require some training, and yet I don't see that reflected in the budget. Training, meaning bringing in experts or going up to Boston or working with Mass Commission to train, because my background's civil rights, I mean, I ran a fair housing organization, so I know how this goes. You have, whoever's looking at these complaints, and you're hoping with additional outreach, you're going to generate additional complaints that would therefore, but there is a level of, of knowledge that you need to know locally. You don't have to be experts in every area, but you need to be able to sift through case facts and say, yea or nay, this, this is a, this is a violation, I need to refer it unto the Mass Commission or HUD or whoever. So where does it, how does that training get paid for if it's not reflected in here?
I think it's a very good question. That was one of the cuts on the floor, so to speak.
Okay, all right.
But I'd say, at this, the honest truth is that some of the people on, at the table have a background or are trained to a good level, and others are less capable, and I, and luckily, most people know that, who they are. There are people trying to falsely claim a level of background, but if you're suggesting that this could be redone to express that, I'm sure we can do some verbiage that allows for that to be explained.
Yeah, I just was wondering how you handle it, because I didn't see it in the in-kind.
It's been explicitly addressed by the Budget Committee, and when Paul, Louie and Michael and I met, we explicitly addressed it, and then it became one of the, as I say-
Right, God, I understand, thank you.
And also, we do have a good working relationship with Mass Commission Against Discrimination, and they have been able to provide us with trainings at no cost.
Okay. So that's an in-kind, actually?
Who was the, who was it? It was Gomez, who replaced her?
I'm sorry.
I didn't see they did.
You know, I, the new director, I know it formerly was Malcolm Medley, I'm not sure.
He was the guy that came down, I think.
Yes, he did.
Well, there's a new person.
There is, and her name escapes me at the moment.
The person who does training at SED?
No, the director.
Oh, the director.
Yeah, the director of training is someone.
The person I used to work with was Becky Schuster, who used to do a lot of training, for Tatts.
Absolutely.
Yeah, there's all through, through the Mass Municipal, there's some training around discrimination in the workplace, so I should, because that would also be, if not free, I can't, I think it is free, training for municipal.
Well, I used to attend when I was an HR director, and Becky Schuster used to provide most of the training programs, but I think there wasn't be, and you, until, particularly the train the trainer one, where, that was a big deal, because you had to go for like a week or something. But she's a very good educator.
But I mean, I guess what I understand is that you considered it, it didn't make it to the budget because you had other priorities, but I would, I just think it should somehow be reflected then in your in-kind that you're going to, because I think it is really an important, important piece of-
Thank you.
-keeping people up to speed on what's, what the law says, and just to help you even handle cases that come in, so.
Very good point. Thank you.
Before you leave, since I do have in hand this complaint, I don't expect you to respond to it today, but I would appreciate your suggestions on how you might respond to it so that we can, you know, we can consider it as to what kind of, you know, what kind of a response we should make there.
Absolutely. Elizabeth Goldberg was the principal planner, you know, the former Chair, outgoing Chair of the Human Rights Commission, was the planner for this event that would have been tonight, and she would have some good language, I think, to also add to this, so I think we want to consider her as part of that.
Well, I would leave that to your discretion.
Thanks.
But I think it would be useful to have, to say, to have your thoughts on this before, you know, for the Commissioners.
Sure. So the next day, a couple of days, we'll take care of getting something to you. Thank you. I noticed you were copying on this.
Yes.
Thank you.
And I, you already heard what the benefits of having both sides, but I think the specific issue has to do with what, you know, what your intentions were, I forget.
I understand, and I thank you for your reply you already made, and I, and I think we're on the same page about, one would have to experience the program to know whether it was devised, that our intention was not to have it devised, with half the army recruiters sitting as part of the panel, so obviously it's obviously important.
Well, Tom, you know that unless you get everybody in the same room at the same time, you don't really get, get one answer, you get the answer from this room and then the answer from that one.
You get tired running between rooms, Bill. You've spent your entire life running between rooms.
Okay, do we have anything else left?
No, I'm all set, and you're going to update your budget to reflect those changes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Can I confirm?
You may help.
Very good.
Yeah, I'd like to shake you, so.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Tom, good to see you.
Good to see you.
So-
Okay, what do we got left?
I make a motion to go into recess.
Recessing?
Until 3:00 PM.
3:00 PM, when we will go to-